Debbie, did?
Yeah.
You good? Dr. Meyer, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. This is the November 2 meeting of the Clinton School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, general law, Section 20. The remote meeting is via Google Meet technology. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So, I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion thereon?
Could I point out one thing?
Certainly.
There was, you should have a paper copy of one bill that was not sent to you in your packet. I think it might have been included in the DocuSign copy that you got, but it wasn't in the packet sent to you. This is an encumbered bill for the audit from last year, just so that you're aware of that.
Thank you. Having been made aware, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of October 19?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you. So, I understand that we have some folks here that may want to make a public comment, and we're happy to have you here. We also, I believe, may have people online that wanted to make comments as well. What we would like to do is establish some ground rules in this, in this both remote and live meeting, and I'd like to take the public comments in the room first and then open it up to as many comments as we can online as well, if there are some. I would ask that we limit the comments to topics on the agenda that, as always, refrain from any personal attacks, that you direct your comments to me as the chair, and that we limit them to two minutes. So, if you would like to make a comment, we would certainly love to hear from you. I would ask that you come to my left, your right, and there are lines that the superintendent and the high school have laid out so that they're socially distant, and then come to the podium here where if you make your comment, both the ambient sound that records us will pick that up as well. So, we'll open it up to any public comments at this time. Please. If you would, just identify yourself and your connection to the schools.
Ms. Blah, I am a parent. I have a secondary year at elementary school. Good evening to the superintendent of school community. I am a middle mom. I work full-time for the corporate system, and I go to these different states all the time. My son is a secondary student who has two parents who are working. And I just urge you to keep the hybrid plan in place. We have an IP meeting tomorrow in school, and he and his family, every child has specific needs, and my funding needs to be in-person. He does not allow the silver loan now amidst a lack of people there. Yeah, specifically or especially because of the high school environment, I just urge you to consider being a hybrid parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cott.
Hi, Dave Peever. I have a sophomore, lead one student in the class, and a previous teacher. I think we, you know, the schools and maybe where we are with at least high grade, if not even a more inclusive group. As we've seen, students are getting sick outside the school system and not in the school system. So, that just goes to show that it's safer actually to be here. Plus, we have all the staff of the school that, you know, that, you know, the community uses the factory workers that if they're unneeded, that they're our work. I think it's more beneficial for everyone to at least keep them in their hybrid. They learn better when they have in-person meetings and, you know, I mean, I've seen my son when he's home, it's like, you know, it seems like the teacher even to the full remote, they're not educating the time for the students that they need to be.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any questions in the chat online, Dr. Meyer? Or comments?
I don't see anything online right now. Mr. Sermak just posted the instructions, and I don't see any other chats at this point.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry to come in. Would you like me to share?
Oh, yeah.
This is from Sabrina Teroux, parent of three children in the school system. It says, "I just want to say that Clinton has done a great job with their full-remote model. Our children have been remote all year, and they're thriving with their teachers, and I just want to say thank you. I know remote work does not work well for every student. I am a special ed teacher, and I work in school with my high-need students. I just want to say thank you."
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing some feedback with us and for sharing your, your comments with us tonight. Dr. Meyer?
Okay. So, the first item on my agenda is, did have a resignation. Carl Sepla is a high school physics teacher who's actually been teaching remotely anyway due to some personal concerns, has been, has accepted another position, so he'll be leaving us in the near future. His last day will actually be November 10. So, he said that he's greatly enjoyed his time here. Clinton has highest regard for the staff and students of Clinton High School. So, we wish Carl well. I know we met over the summer, and it was a difficult decision, and he tried to, tried to come back, and it just wasn't, wasn't quite working, so. So, the next agenda item is the reopening updates, and so in your packet, we can start with sort of the data that we always start with. I have the graph that we look at each week, and, you know, what you can see on the graph is just basically the, since our last meeting, we've been in the red two weeks. On the 22nd, we went to a 9.1. On the 29th, we spiked up to a 12.7. So typically, you know, our cases had been about 13, 15 a week, and then went up to 18, and then went up to 25. Right now, you know, it was 25 for the 14-day period, and, you know, right now, based on our preliminary numbers, we're probably looking at somewhere around 30 to 30, like 32 to 39, somewhere in that range. I mean, it's always, there's always a little variance because of the exact days that the state cuts off and where they, you know, which one's counted on this one, which one's on that one. But we know, working with the Board of Health, the data that'll come out Thursday will most likely have us in the 30s for the cases for the two-week period, which will probably put us at around somewhere between 15, maybe upwards of 18 for our third week. So, there's always a lag on this data, so we know that, you know, the data that comes out Thursday is, is basically the data that came from, you know, last, like Monday or Tuesday through this Monday or Tuesday. So, it's a little bit, so we kind of know what that data is going to be by the time Thursday comes. So, we are unfortunately pretty certain that the data on 11/5 will be our third week in the red. So, after that chart, I mean, I think if you look at the graph, you can see how there's the red line at 8 and the, and the yellow line at 4, and you can see pretty much through all of our planning and early stages, we stayed in that range, which was basically be the yellow zone, and then the last two weeks, we popped up there, and that we're continuing to climb right now, and that's the part that I think is really concerning. The, the next couple pages are just the maps and the specific data that go behind the chart. I just give you those each week so you can update them. There's some other information. One of them I was gonna, you know, sort of highlight as another indicator, which is percent positivity the last 14 days. However, the governor spoke today, kind of how they're starting to maybe move away from that metric, or possibly at least look at how they're disaggreging that metric, because part of what they're saying is that particularly in colleges where they're doing so much testing on a regular basis that it's sort of skewing that percent positivity number, so they're going to try to at least pulse like a college number and a non-college number or something to that effect. So, but our percent positivity climbed up to 3.07 on the last report. Our preliminary estimate was, working with the Board of Health today, was that we'd probably be around 4.1 or 4.2 on Thursday for the percent positivity. We don't really know. We're basing that off kind of the average number of cases, the tests, sorry, because we need to look at the number of tests in the community. We've been having about 1,000 tests, so that's kind of where we made that, that, that estimate from. So, our percent positivity has been rising in town, and our, and our cases have been rising in town. So, just to provide some more context, so the town of Clinton has seen a surge in positive cases of COVID-19, and I illustrated, just talked about that through that town data in the packet. The data that was released on November 5 will be, most likely be the highest number of cases reported using the current metric. Now, I mean, like I said, it could be off a couple here or there, but we know it should be, should be large. Clinton Public Schools reported four positive students during the week of October 22 to October 28, and the, during the timeframe, I should say. That's, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education publishes data on, on a weekly interval of cases reported by districts, so that was their cutoff for their report. Only eight districts in the state reported more positive cases than Clinton, and there's been at least one positive case in each building this week, and one of the, one of the student cases appears to have resulted from the transmission from the student's van driver. This was reported to DESE, but not listed as a positive staff case in the DESE reporting because the van driver is not an employee of the district. The van driver is a contracted employee, so they don't record that as a, as a staff member for us. It was reported to them so that they knew what had happened. We did have a meeting with the commissioner today after the governor spoke. There was a meeting for all superintendents at 2:30, and I would say that the governor and the commissioner are still very supportive of keeping public schools open as long as possible, and I think we all are here too. I mean, I think we can all, the public comment, I think everyone up here, we know that from a lot of kids and a lot of families, keeping the schools open is very important, and I think that's why we work so hard to make sure they could open at the beginning of the year to begin with. It was brought up to our attention today during the commissioner's meeting that the, they're looking to have a new metric in the coming weeks to support the new guidance of remaining open after three weeks of red, so I should talk about that. There was a memo, the DPH issued a memo, I think it was on October 21, is technically when it came out. It was particularly regarding cities of town with, with, first of all, saying that the high-risk maps released would go to Thursday, but it was also identifying that the change they made of adding an asterisk to certain towns, if the town had like a college or a prison or a nursing home or something like that in there. The, there was one sentence at the end of this one-page release that says, "In addition, districts and schools currently open for in-person instruction are encouraged to remain open, even if their local community is designated as red, so long as there is no evidence of COVID-19 transmission in schools." So, the issue that came from that is basically trying to identify what is, what is the definition of transmission in schools? What does that look like? How are we measuring that? If we're looking at something like saying, we think a student got, you know, became positive because of driving in a van with a positive bus driver, does that indicate transmission in schools? That's, that's one of the, the questions that we're trying to get answers for, and that is supposedly what they said today. They're going to try to get us answers to that in the coming weeks with the new, with the new metric. I did email the commissioner, once they emailed this guidance out, asking those specific questions about, does this apply to all communities or just the red asterisk communities? Because it did sort of appear that way from the memo, and then other, for other clarification as far as are we allowed to, would we still be allowed to bring in high-need students or elementary students if we're not seeing cases at that level, even if we're in red three weeks in a row? Because if you remember, the previous guidance, the guidance that we've been working on pretty much all summer, has said that if you're above eight cases per 100,000, basically that red zone, that red community, that you're supposed to open in a remote model. That was the initial guidance. Then they indicated that they wanted to make sure that we were trying to use multiple sources of data. They also indicated that they wanted us to have three weeks in a row of that type of data, which three published reports, which should actually represent four weeks of data because it's a two-week look back, and that, that fourth, that third report encompassing our fourth week of data will come out on, that'll be the one that comes out on this Thursday. So, I guess part of the, part of the concern or part of the, what we're trying to hopefully get some guidance from, from the commissioner, I did reach out to the, Tom Scott, the director of the Mass Association of Superintendent, School Superintendents, and I kind of asked him about the same thing, and they said that the, the problem, the backlash they're having, like I said, is essentially, they pointed to one sentence in a one-page memo to try to essentially erase all the guidance that they've given us for two months or so, and they didn't really provide other guidance, clarification, definitions of what does this mean, or how you measure it, or anything like that. When I did contact the DESE, they did say that, well, if we, if you suspect that there's transmission in schools, they can send a group out to do testing, and they could have an epidemiologist come consult with us to kind of see what they recommend our next steps to be. However, I think that that's a little, I feel like that's, it's almost like you're asking us to wait until, until it's too late almost at that point. Like, wait until you have a problem, and then we'll come in and we'll test to try to figure out what your problem is. So, so it's hard, because I think we all know, we all know what's best for kids is to have them in school, and, and I think that there's no, no way around that. Like I said, I think that's why we worked so hard this summer to get schools to be open to begin with. Right now, I think going against the guidance that our plan was built on without having sufficient guidance to replace it is very difficult. So, that, that would be, you know, I think that's, that's kind of...
So, can I ask you a question? When, do you have a timeline of when this new guidance?
He said...
Would be available?
He said, hopefully, within a week or two. I mean, that's about what we get. I mean, I can, I intend to contact the DESE tomorrow regardless, because I'd need to, to update them on whatever our status is, because anytime you make any change at all on our status, we need to, we need to inform them. So, like on Thursday, I had to inform them that, you know, this is why we were going to pause our hybrid learning for right now. And they said that was the right thing to do. They said, if you're concerned about some cases and you need to try to work with the Board of Health and do that, pausing is fine. It wasn't really that, we weren't just kind of abandoning things. So, that's, you know, you never know. You know, I think the commissioner ends up finding himself in kind of the same thing where, you know, he kind of worded it as they're working with the medical community right now to try to come up with that guidance, and they're hoping to have it in the next, you know, in the next week or two. I think he's sort of probably, I mean, he's not writing the guidance himself, you know, he's relying on the DPH and the medical community to kind of help with that guidance, so I don't know exactly what the timeline's going to be. So, that's, you know, that's where we are right now. I don't know, I don't know what else, if you have any specific questions?
Yeah, so I'll open it up to the committee for their thoughts. I guess what I would say first, and I would agree with you, that I've been grateful to the town of Clinton and to the support that we have had and continue to have, based on all of the work that you have done, the teams have done, the team of teachers have done to get us open in, in a hybrid model. I am a little concerned that we're not clear on, 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 you know, the, the contact tracing piece and where these cases are coming from and why they continue to spike, and, you know, if it, we, we've talked in this committee about not all reds are equal, all right, and, if, if it were community-based cases that weren't affecting the schools, I think that would be, that would feel different to me, but we are seeing almost daily cases, positive cases in our schools, and, and, and that concerns me. And, and while I don't think it's, I, I don't know. I mean, again, I'll open it up to the committee, but my own opinion is, I'm not sure that we're ready for a vote for, you know, full-remote for the, forever, but I, I just wonder if it isn't prudent to, you know, maybe continue where we are right now, at least until our next meeting, to see if we've got more guidance that comes out about this, and to give your team more time to, you know, to do that contact tracing and try and get a handle on where these cases are coming from, if, if not knock them down. But I'll open it up to the rest of the board.
I, I, am, am I doing this right now, Jan? Am I good?
All right.
First of all, and I don't know that, I know Pam, but I don't know these people here, but I appreciate you coming in and letting us hear...
Indeed.
...what, what you had to say. I agree with you. I, I've been writing stuff, and I've been talking to people now for, for two weeks, and, and, you know, first off, and I say this to the, Rob just stepped up, but the teachers and the, and the staff and Steve and, you know, everything they put together has been good, and, you know, they were prepared to go hybrid, also to fall back remote, and also hopefully to go back fully at some point.
Right.
And I know there's, there's, there's students that, you know, they could go to sleep on their book and wake up again at 8:00 in the morning, and they don't need anybody, they're, they're self-starters, but there's very few of them, and there's so many kids now that, you know, whether the parent's home with them, and you know, you got a parent, it's hard enough with one kid, but if you have two kids and they're in different grades and they're, and they're both remote, and these parents are trying to do that, and then you got kids that are home alone, the parents have to work, and, and I, I know it's tough. I, I, I get my frustration, and Steve kind of hit on it, is we don't even know if, when they're going to come out with this news, so we're going to shut for two weeks and then hope the state figures it out, and I honestly, and I'm, again, I'm no doctor, believe me, but kids are going to, you're going to have kids, people, not just kids, you're going to have people getting positive tests from now till whenever this, this vaccine comes out. So, to keep closing and then saying, you know, well, we got a couple of kids that had it, and there is no, no evidence that the kids are getting it from here. And some of the people I've talked to, because they have to work, this thing's kicking, because they have to work, so then they have to find daycare for their kids, so now you're taking a bunch of kids, and I'm not saying the daycares aren't doing the right thing, but they're, I would say it's a safer environment here in the school than, than putting, you know, 20 kids or 15 kids at a house all trying to learn together. So, I, I understand what Joel's saying, it's very frustrating. I, you know, I'd be in favor of maybe finish cleaning up this week and then coming back next week to the, back to the hybrid again. I, I'd love to go fully back, but I, you know, that's not going to happen right now, but I just, this remote is just, it's just too tough, and, and I applaud the parents out there and guardians and whoever that are kind of working with these kids, because it's, it's just tough, and, and so that, that's kind of, that's kind of my bit, you know, and if, if you don't think go back hybrid, and, and parents have always had the option of homeschooling or staying, right, you still have the remote.
Well, it's not really homeschool, it's, it's a...
Right. That's what I meant. They still have, they could stay, listen, I don't feel safe, so I could, you know, you could still keep your kid home, your, your student home remote, but the hybrid would be there for, you know, the kids that need to be in school, and I think there's a, you know, a heck of a lot of them that, that need that, so that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Joel? Yes. Yeah.
I don't happen to agree with Mr. Bailey very often, but I do on this.
Hey, get that down, Jan.
I think we should go back hybrid, at least for the next two weeks till our next meeting. Let's stay with what we know, let's stay with what we're doing, but let's do some other proactive things. When I was just pulling in, there was fields full of kids outside in the fields with sports. Let's keep our kids in school, and let's, you know, cut back on some of the extracurricular stuff, and that way we can keep our students in the classrooms.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Listen, I, I think it's a difficult situation, but what I'll, what I'll say is, we've worked months on a plan that would allow us to be thoughtful about going from remote to hybrid to full or back again, and, and I think what we're seeing is, the dad is telling us that things are spiking, and we're a small community, so even if we're not transmitting COVID specifically in the schools, it's when a mom or a dad gets it, and then what kids have been exposed to their parents, and then those kids have been in our schools. So, it's a lagging indicator, right? It doesn't happen immediately, and, and I think if we, if we just say, let's stick with where we are, and, and we'll see what happens in two weeks, and then five days from now, there's 11 kids positive in one of the schools, I think people are going to sing a different tune, and, and I think then they're going to say, well, why didn't you look at the data? We saw it, how come you didn't? Now my little Johnny is sick. And it's going to be okay as long as it's not like your child and it's not as personal to you, but I think we have a greater responsibility to potentially pump the brakes, let the data come back, and then kind of see where we are, because we already know we're going to be red next, this week, which means we're going to be red next week. So, for me, like, I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of harm, I, I'd like to see us go full-remote, to be honest with you, for at least till our next meeting, because I think if we don't have guidance as to how we're defining transmission in schools, then we're responsible for the kids that are in our schools. And to me, like, health trumps everything, and if we can do what we can to get high-need kids in, like, I mean, I have a child also that, that has been on an IEP his whole life, so I, that's super important, and I think we need to figure out ways to address those things to make sure kids are getting what they need, and I think we always try to do that, but, but I just think health trumps all of it. Like, that's the first piece of our responsibility to these kids and to these families. So, I'd feel better about it to know two weeks from now we have more info, and then kind of figure out where we need to go from, from there, because, I mean, what's your direction high and to the right?
If I can, I'll just clarify one thing, because there was a couple of questions that came up through the chat, and there's some, there's a lot of people expressing very similar things about wanting, wanting the schools to stay open, wanting the, you know, expressing frustration with their children, not with their children, with their children learning from home. But the thing that I would want to just clarify is, the, the total number of cases we've had to report, so someone asked about that, we had four this week, we had three the previous week. So, we've had to report seven cases so far to the DESE, and then someone asked with contact tracing, have we determined like the, the source of them? So, the idea is you can, you can identify mostly the, the likely source, and I would say, like, like I said, for, for six of those seven, it appeared the likely... And I would say, like, like I said, for, for six of those seven, it appeared the likely source was the household, let's say, not the school. And then for one of them, like I said, it appeared it was from, from transportation to school or from school or whatever.
So I wanted to make a point, or the, the point that you made, Mr. Bailey, about the fluidity of going back and forth between models. I, I guess I have a question as a result. Is, is that possible? I mean, it, it doesn't seem to me to be that fluid. I thought we were waiting for end of quarters or before moving back and forth between...
No, no, I guess, anyway, what I meant was...
For families, I mean.
No, 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 I meant the way it was set up, the way that the administration set it up was, you know, like, what I thought was ideal, so we started hybrid, but you also had everything in place to go full, should we be able to go back?
Oh, sure.
Right, that's what I meant, yeah.
I thought you meant for...
I didn't know we were going to do it, I meant the, the model was set up that way.
Yeah, I misunderstood. I thought you meant for a family that, given the current spike in our numbers, just decides, I'm not sending my child to school anymore. I don't know that we have the capacity for that child to just be remote now, do we?
I mean, I, I'd say right now that's a challenge, is that after the, pretty much after each positive case notification, we normally have more families that opt to try to switch to full remote. For most of them right now, you know, a lot of them, we've asked them to kind of hang in there for a few weeks because the, the, the guidance from the DESE was, you had, you know, a few weeks to try to make those switches because we are reaching to a point that, to accommodate all those requests, may require us to shuffle like class rosters so that we could actually designate more remote teachers. So, so that's, um, that's a, that's a potential challenge. I mean, it's not, not impossible, but it's a, it's a, it's something that, you know, I think as, as individual parents make the decision or individual students make the decision that once, you know, once there's been a few positive cases that they, they don't want to come back, it, you know, it's incumbent upon us to still find a way to educate those, those students. So, but I think for right now, you know, the part of it was, we wanted them to just kind of hang in there for a little bit because we knew, basically knew that three weeks of red was coming, right? And then we thought that might end up having us, we might have no choice but to go to remote under the, you know, it wasn't until the 20, well, whatever the meeting date I had, the 27th or something like that on Tuesday, when the Commissioner clarified that the expectation was that, that applied to all communities, that that guidance changed. So, so I think moving forward, that is something that we would have to look on a solution to accommodate those families.
My question is just one that, you know, if, if I, if I put my principal hat on, I would get to a point where if there are, you know, if, if I have four students a day that test positive and the contact tracing exponentially adds to the number of kids that are in quarantine and I don't have the capacity for them to be in fully remote, we have an obligation to educate them, but we don't necessarily have the capacity. Am I understanding that right?
If we're saying...
Without shifting classes?
Yeah, I mean, right now, it would, it would cause, it would require us to make some staffing changes if, if to accommodate all those requests, if those requests ultimately were, were to still to be valid. We'd probably have to double check with those, look at the list that the, for the principals have. And what it might require is, you know, taking a section in a certain grade level and trying to reassign students to balance it out a little better. I mean, that's, that's, that's what it would take. I mean, we still have the same number of students and the same number of, of teachers, it's just if there's change between the, the division from, you know, remember we built it based on about a 20% split? And then, we actually started less than that, which was the first challenge, because then all of a sudden we had more kids to put into the classrooms. But now, now that number's kind of swinging back, so the, but, you know, it doesn't necessarily evenly come out of every classroom or some, or, or it does kind of evenly come out of every classroom, so if I need to switch a teacher over, I need to do something with those remaining kids. So that would just be, that's just a, that's a challenge. I mean, that shouldn't, that's our problem, you know what I mean? Like, I think that that's a mechanics question and, and I understand it stresses our, stretches our capacity, but it's our job to kind of just find that solution. And it might take a little bit, but we, we can, we'll, we'll figure out a way to work around that. You know, I think the number one, the, the biggest concern is just, you know, it, I think it does become just the, the health metrics. I mean, we've said safety is the priority the entire time. And, and like I said, the sudden, kind of the sudden change from what had been an established metric to all of a sudden, nothing, right? To just saying like, well, just kidding, go ahead, stay open. So I feel that that's, that, that just leaves us very, it's a very...
Vulnerable.
...difficult situation to be in because now, as we make all these calls, when we say, you know, I mean, literally, we get a text message in the middle of the day from the Board of Health with an address. Take the address, we look it up in iPass, figure out if there's any kids in that building. Then we normally work with the, the head nurse, reaches out to the town nurse, we try to identify, if we can, who the positive case is, if there's an impact on the school. And then from there, we work to, they work together to identify close contacts, any close contacts that they might have identified, then we meet with our teachers of potential where those kids were to try to identify close contacts in the classroom, try to identify if the student was with anybody else for any special, you know, has the student received related services, is the student, was a student recently tested by a school psychologist? And then we have to try to track all that down and then we have to determine which kids meet the criteria of the close contact. And then the close contact criteria changed. It used to be 15 minutes within six feet and then it changed to within six feet for 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. So I know that seemed, might not seem like a huge change, but if you're thinking about an elementary teacher who might be spending almost six hours a day with the same group of kids, tying shoes and helping with whatever, like, now all of a sudden, there's, there's probably a lot of potential that you could have been within that, you know, even if you're trying to stay, you know, if you were consciously trying to keep your six feet of distance, younger kids need help. And you end up, you know, so you go and you go and you go, and then you got to say, did you, were you with, you know, do, do we think that you were within 15, you know, within six feet for 15 minutes with that student? So, um, so those are the challenges. You know, it's difficult, you find out someone's a close contact and if they're in school, we gotta like take them out of school, pull them out of class, send them home. Everyone knows that they were a close contact. I mean, they don't necessarily know, but they, they talk, right? And then, and then we got to keep those students out for 14 days. So it's been, you know, I think the first, the first, the first five weeks that we were open in the hybrid model, I thought were great. And, and honestly, it was the same procedure. We got a text when there was a case from the Board of Health and typically I might get a text once a day. And probably not even, because back then it was, you know, maybe every other day, or there might be a batch of them that come in on Monday because there's usually a lag on the weekend, so we could check. And then it kind of worked well because when we get notified of all those cases, particularly over the weekend, the way our cohorts were separated by going from the gold week to the green week, when we would get the big notifications on Monday, usually it helped us because a lot of the people that might have been considered close contacts weren't in the building anyway, right? They were, they were already at home because now was their week to be at home. So we had a little time to try to work with the Board of Health to confirm that, to try to make sure that they were doing the proper things. And I just think that what we've seen is, is, you know, the last two weeks, but really last week, was when, you know, it was, you're just getting cases throughout the day and it was just, it was just a lot, you know? And I think that, and you could feel it, and I think you could feel it in the buildings and you could feel it, we could, we could feel it from parents. Like I said, we have parents calling not wanting to send their kids. You could feel it from staff who are worried about it. And I think we've done the best we can and I think that we've, you know, and it's, you know, it's just getting closer to people. There's a lot more cases in town and we have people that are, we have staff that are quarantined, that are, that can't come to work. Once again, a lot of it's not from stuff happening in school, it's from things going on in town or, or their work or their church or whatever it is.
But, but it, well, I think the distinction for me is, it would be one thing if it were happening outside of the community, the transmission of the cases, the positives, and it didn't come in, but it is coming in and we're seeing it every day. And it, and I just, you know, you have to think that the trajectory of the spike in the numbers in town, you know, continues to play itself out that way. And I just, for me, it, it, you know, it, it comes down to a question of risk tolerance and, and I'm not, I, I'm not willing to, to say that I don't know that it's safe for my child to be here. And, and I think, you know, if, if we're going, and I'm not going to say that to any parent here, that, that the schools, that we can guarantee that your children are safe. And, and despite all of the, you know, extraordinary efforts and, on the part of our administration, on the part of our teachers, on the part of our students, you know, to, to recognize that, you know, this is serious and, and they have to comply with the, the requests that their schools are making of them, to distance, to wear their masks, to wash their hands. And I know that they do that and yet still, we see the numbers rising and I, I think it's, I, I think that that's a risk I'm not comfortable with at this point.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that, but it also, for me, it's, I think we all have, we all have our own anxieties and our own personal risk tolerance. For me, it's about the careful consideration we put towards building our plan with guidance from the state. If you remember when we first did that, it was when you were red, they considered that you should go full remote. And then they moved the goalpost and they said, well, if you're three weeks in red, let's look at the data, see what the numbers tell you, be a bit more prescriptive with it, and then make the decision whether you should go remote or not. And now they want to move the goalpost again, but tell you, hold on, we'll let you know where the end zone is. We're just not sure yet. I just think in the absence of that end zone, like, we owe it to the community to go remote until we have that information. And when we have that information, we can take that with another two or three works with the data and say, how is the community responding to where we are? And then we'll have two pieces of information that we don't have today, which is, one, what's the guidance? Which I particularly have a challenge with the fact that we keep moving the goalposts, although I too want my children in school, they want to be here. But not at the cost of risk of them not being healthy. And then additionally, we'll have two more weeks of data to see where has Clinton gone? Do we continue to spike? Do we go from nine to 12 to 18 to 25? Because to Joel's point, like, the law of averages is where, if you're at 12 and there's four in the school, and then you go to 25, there's going to be 12 in the school and then you're going to go to 30 or there could be more in the school. Like, we're not just going to be, we're not in a bubble, we're not going to be immune to it. So I think that additional information could be really helpful to this committee on figuring out where we are post-November 16th.
So, uh, for those watching, for those in attendance, the school committee is charged with adopting and/or amending the, the reopening plan, the, the learning plans that we have here. I guess from what I'm hearing that we're not, we're not 100% calibrated. I don't think anybody has the appetite or the energy to take a vote for, you know, to move from hybrid to a full remote indefinitely.
Uh-uh. No.
And so, so we're, we're left with, do we continue in the model that we had been in prior to, you know, going red this past Friday? Or do we continue with, you know, sort of the full remote temporarily? I, I would advocate until our next meeting at least.
Joel, I was just going to say this, and I know you could talk about the health and I, and I agree with you, I mean, the health of the, the students and this faculty is number one, but I'm concerned not only their physical health, but also their mental health and their social health. And, and that's, again, where I, and I'm, again, I'm not trying to take an unnecessary risk, but I'm just looking at the, the kids that, and the parents that are, they're struggling right now just to, even if it's for two weeks, to be able to, to educate them. I guess one thing they got to, this is the more of appreciation for being a teacher. But just to be able to educate those kids at home, they just don't have, not every family, not, most families don't have that, that ability. And now that a lot of businesses, you know, and this happened back in March, a lot of businesses, a lot of companies let people work from home or laid them off. And now they're not. So who's gonna...
Yeah.
That's where I'm at. That's, again, I'm not looking to take an unnecessary risk with these kids, but I am just saying that, you know, getting them in school to me is, is, and you, and I don't think anyone knows, and I know Matt, how many, the cases they're going to have, whether it's in the school or in the town or, or state, I mean, it's just, it's a, it's a virus, it's, it's unpredictable and, I don't know, that's just my opinion. I, I want them in school and I'm, whatever.
I actually agree with all the points being made.
You getting this, Jan?
Yes, there's nothing I want more than to have kids stay in school. But I have to, I'm, I'm tending to, to believe that we have to go with what we originally said. We, we said we were basing all of our decisions on data and I think we have to continue to do that. And right now, the data is telling us, maybe we should, we should take a step back and stay, stay just temporarily remote until we can see more data and maybe get more, maybe get more guidelines that are a little bit more concrete and not kind of flip-flopping. I mean, that was the biggest disappointment to me. I feel like we all thought, okay, three weeks in the red, this is what we intended to do, this is how we set everything up. And now like, you know, like Matt was pointing out, they just, they're changing it. So, but I, I do think our number one concern, even though I hate, I hate to say it because I want to see the kids stay in school more than anything, is that the number one concern is, is the safety of the students. And with this whole town being in the red and the numbers going up every day, I, I can't in good conscience say that, that we should have that happen right now.
Yeah. I mean, I have grandchildren in the school, so, I mean, having children in the school myself, of course I'm concerned for their safety. But when you look at six out of the seven are from one household, you know, we're looking at data and you can screw the numbers any way you want, or...
Hey, that works too.
But no, we can't. But the thing is, you know, at least if we stayed in the hybrid for the next two weeks, then the single parents would be able to figure out what they're going to do because once they go remote, if you say you're going remote tomorrow, what are they, calling out of work? You know, I don't think we're in that spot yet that we have to shut down and go, like I said, I would work in steps first. Shut down athletics, shut down the extracurriculum stuff, shut down, you know, anything extra that they're attending, dance, stuff like that. Keep them in school, keep them in the classrooms.
Okay, I'll just share one thing. I talked to the Board of Health, just because it's come up a couple of times, when we talked today, that the athletics, we're going to try to, we're, we're going to basically have to shut down athletics by the end of the week. The, most likely, it's a, and I don't quote me on this part of it, but I know that the, the DPH guidelines, I believe, are something to the effect of, if your town is, from a Board of Health standpoint, something like, if your town's a red three weeks in a row, then you have to roll back a lot of restrictions in town. So come Monday, there's going to be, you know, we're going to go back to whatever was in like phase three, step one or something like that, if, if, you know, assuming everything, all the data is the way we were. So there are going to be a lot of those kind of scaling back some of those things. I don't remember exactly what I'd, I worry about the school stuff, I'm not sure where like gyms were or where dance was or anything on that, but, but I know that we're trying to do that. I think we're trying to reschedule, just on athletics, and we're trying to reschedule the girls' soccer night, senior soccer night to Friday, so we can try to get that in for the end of the week, so they can at least get a, get an end to their season.
And you've said to us right along, our meetings are every two weeks, but if something happens in the meantime and we need to make a change right off the bat, we have a happens in the meantime, and we need to make a change right off the bat, we have a special meeting, we'll meet. So, I mean, we can continue even, you know, this week and give them a chance to see how it goes, um, before the numbers come out Thursday.
The guidance has always been, though, if we were going to be three weeks in the red, to expect that this was what's going to happen. So it's not, I think the reason why there's so much attention to this meeting and why people are talking about it so much and the anxiety is closing in is because everybody knows we're in our third week and they're expecting to see remote happen, which is why we are having these conversations at a level. So I would, I would argue that this isn't a surprise to anybody. We've articulated this very clearly from Jump Street because we knew what we were up against. And again, I want the kids in the school just as much as everybody else does, just not at the risk of what we're discussing right now. So it's not a surprise. It's exactly what we thought it was going to be. And the last thing I want to see is us break our trust to the town that we said, this is our plan, and we go, yeah, but not really. And then a week from now, there's, you know, 10 kids sick in the school, and we're like, well, how do we, how do we get that trust back? Now that we went against the plan that we put out and articulated all along. And I recognize kids have needs, and I think we should do everything we can to get high needs kids in the school, once we have the information, and support those families. They deserve our support, and they'll always have it. But, you know, we got to make a decision for the masses right now, let the dust settle, get the information, and then support those families every which way we can, one at a time, if that's what it takes, and then know where we are.
Any final thoughts?
I'd like to make a motion that we go with the, um, switch to the Remote Plus Learning Model, um, until November 17th.
So, um, so for clarity's sake, that we would, we would, um, remain in the model that we're currently in, uh, as of this past Friday, and reevaluated our next meeting? Is that?
Um, no, I think, I think it would be where most students are learning remotely, except for the high-risk students that we're able to accommodate, um, for the, for the high need students, that they, that they could still come into school.
So typically, so we do have, and we haven't talked a lot about that, but the, um, so there's basically, there's full, uh, there's obviously the different layers of the plan. We had the Full Return, the Hyper Plan, the Remote Plan, and then there's kind of this other area we called Remote Plus, which is where we're trying to, um, accommodate, you know, as many high-needs kids as, as we, as we can. Um, you know, if that were the direction, the, that's where, I mean, that's where I think we got to be careful, because I think if, if we were going to be in any type of remote setting for an extended period of time, we would definitely want to be in Remote Plus, and we'd want to try to bring in as many kids as we could safely bring in. Um, it does, logistically, it takes a little bit to make that switch, a little more so than, um, just going back to the hybrid or back to whatever, because we got to work out some of the, which exact high-needs kids would it be? What's the transportation plan for them? I mean, we have preliminary plans on that, we would just need to consider them a little bit. So, um, you know, so if that's, if that's the direction the committee wants to go, we could probably look to at least get some of our classrooms in for, for, uh, you know, next week. Um, the, uh, I don't know how many we could get in, uh, on that notice, but probably some of our most high-risk ones. Um, you know, the only challenge with that is, you know, and I know, we, we know just the reality of it is, a lot of our classrooms with our highest need students are also the classrooms with the most inability to keep social distance. Um, and there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot more challenges, uh, in some of those classrooms with things like toileting students, uh, students unable to keep their mask on, those types of things. And I think we would overcome those challenges, and we need to bring those students in. Um, like I said, particularly if it was any type of long-term switch to remote. Um, you know, I think, I think the, I think the Governor and the Commissioner, um, recognize all the challenges, and they recognize everything that we're saying. Um, you know, we want to have kids in school, kids need to be in school, schools aren't being shown to be the super spreaders that they were feared to be. Now, they probably would be if they were just regular school, but it's school with, under COVID conditions, right? So with all the precautions in place, they're not being spreaders. Um, but, uh, I just think that, you know, we just need to, I just getting back to the point, I guess would be, to do Remote Plus takes a little bit of coordination. So if we're only doing, if the idea is just to essentially continue the pause until we get more guidance, um, I would almost say, continue the pause in remote, and when we get the guidance, we would determine who we could then bring in. And we would bring whoever we were allowed, whether it was high need students, whether it was all our high need students, whether it was all of our, all of our kids going back to a hybrid, um, whether it was, you know, we want to bring in, we, we look at the metric and we think we can bring in high needs kids and pre-KK and one or something like that, you know, we can look and say, based on whatever the new guidance is. Um, but I just feel like, I feel like right now, um, we just, you know, we don't have guidance, and we don't have, they, the one thing we were going on, they, they took away and they didn't replace it or anything.
Well, and I guess I would say to that too, that, um, you know, we, we've said multiple times in multiple meetings, um, in this committee, that, um, you know, not all red is created equal. And, you know, the idea that, um, you know, the, the first few cases were kind of isolated to one area or to, you know, um, you know, one family, I think we're beyond that now. We're, we're testing at a rate in town at, at 3% positivity, and it's going up. And, and I just, I think that, um, I'm just, I'm restating, I guess, the point, that I just, it's, it's not a, a level of risk right now that I'm comfortable with. But, uh, I guess I would ask the committee, would, um, are you open to Dr. Meyer's plan to continue in this model that we're in right now, while looking at what that Remote Plus could look like in the timeframe that they need to be able to put it together, so that our, our high need students, our struggling students, you know, there's an additional plan for support there?
Yes, I think I would change my motion to, to say that we continue with the pause button on until we can either get more data or establish more guidelines on how we should proceed.
So your, your motion is to adopt Option Two on your sheet then, yes? Which basically says, switch to full remote just until our next meeting, in order to maintain that guidance and understand where we go next?
Yeah, I mean, that, that bothers me a little bit, because I don't, if we're saying it's until November 17th, I don't think we can be sitting here Monday, November 16th, and making a decision and expect all parents to have their daughter or son ready for the bus the next day if we say, you know, green light. So I'm, I, I feel like we may need to tweak that a little bit.
Well, and I, I think, you know, that's up to the administration to have concurrent plans ready to go, that, that, you know, if it's going to be, what would it be then? A gold week? You know, if, if it's gold weekend, then, then they're ready to go. And, and if, um, you know, and if we have the data at that point, then, that if it looks like we need to go in a different direction, we do that too. And, and I guess the third concurrent plan is, you know, what would support look like for, um, you know, for high need students? Whether that's in, whether that's remote, whether that's a different, you know, model altogether in terms of supporting them? Um, but I, I guess I, I would feel more comfortable deferring to the superintendent and the administrative team, um, rather than us dictating, you know, what, what those, what the operations piece is supposed to look like. Mary, could you repeat the motion back?
So Tina withdrew her motion, and she changed her motion to continue with what we have now, which is the remote power until we get more guidance with us knowing.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. So, uh, motion having been made and seconded, uh, any discussion, any further discussion?
I, I guess alls I would say is, so when, when would we tweak it? Like, does it become like dynamic? I mean, what's this, if, if Option Two is just to go till the 16th until it's wait two weeks, then when, when would we tweak it? Like, tomorrow, the next day?
No, so my understanding of the motion that's on the floor right now is that we would continue this pause, I guess we're calling it, um, and, and expect that the superintendent would be working with the team to look at concurrent, uh, options based on what we have to review when we come back on the, whatever the date is, the 16th, right? Our next meeting?
Yep.
And, and then we would have options and data to, um, you know, to pivot again if we need to.
Okay. So we're going to be remote until the 16th, pending more data and more direction with subsequent plan?
That's the motion on the floor.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Three to two. Um, so let me just say, I, I know this is extraordinarily difficult, we are living in extraordinarily difficult times. Um, you know, it, uh, a vote for or against does not, um, change the fact that, that we are all committed to, um, providing, uh, safe and supportive schools for all of our students. Uh, and I thank you for the discussion.
Uh, one other thing I just wanted to mention was, so what day of the week is it that we kind of know what the data is going to show? And the reason why I ask that question is because we don't necessarily need to wait till the 16th if neck, you know, Tuesday, November 10th, we know, oh, we might be in the yellow this week. Or at any time between now and then that we see, um, an improvement in the numbers, we could always call a special meeting to be able to make the decision to get everybody back to school the following Monday.
Correct.
Right, yep.
Does that, does that sound?
Yeah. Yeah.
Something like we could, we could consider that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, so I can, I, I'll, I'll reach out to the DESE again tomorrow. Um, I'll explain kind of what, what we're dealing with, try to get a better sense of the urgency for what is this other guidance look like? Um, you know, they did mention some other things, like testing or those types of things, like, I don't know if they would come out and do, um, some testing around here to try to just kind of get a dipstick of, you know, are there a lot of asymptomatic students? Or is it, you know, is it, are we pretty much catching the cases that, that are there? Um, and we can see what other, what other options they would have. And I think that, like you said, if they, if the guidance comes back, um, earlier, uh, you know, it's, it's easier, I think, for most families for us to pivot back to a hybrid. So like, if, if guidance came out that said, we met the qualifications to, if guidance was released earlier and it showed that based on our data, our numbers, whatever they're looking at in the new model, that we should be going back to a hybrid model, we could do that if we, if we had those numbers. Um, otherwise, I think then we would just, we would wait until the school committee meeting on the 16th to, to, um, to figure out what, what the next step would be. Um, but yeah, I mean, I guess.
And Steve, based upon the data, I mean, to Tina's point, I mean, at this point in time, when the data comes out on Thursday, we're pretty much, it's a, it's leading into the fact that we're going to be red, which means the following week, we're also going to be red, because it's a, it's a 14-day roll-in, right?
Most likely, yeah. So I guess the difference would be is, are we still a red?
That's right.
Climbing, or are we a red that kind of has looked like we had a little spike and now we're coming back down? And then, like I said, what are the other pieces of information that they're going to include in this new metric? I know, like, in the daily dashboard, they changed some of the things today to try to break things out by positive cases, by age group, and those types of things. Like, I don't know if there are, uh, if they're going to look at more, you know, fine, fine-tuned, um, uh, metrics for the, for whatever the next version of guidance would be. And I think that's the part that we need to try to figure out is, you know, for all along, you told us that we were looking at these, you know, all along, they told us that we were looking at, um, percent positivity, that was the first one. It was percent positivity needed to be below 5%. Then it became this cases per 100,000. And that was all over the summer when we were like developing plans. Those are the metrics that they wanted people to use. And, and like I said, a lot of people, you know, the, the whole state made decisions on those, and then they said, okay, well, now we're, they're basically saying percent positivity is getting skewed, and they're trying to fix that because of all the, all the testing. And then they're trying to, um, you know, and then they're saying now to basically, if you're in the red on this other metric that they gave us on cases per 100,000, to disregard it. And they haven't really said, you know, what is the definition of transmission in schools? Right? And I still keep going back to the idea that, I know we can say it's not, we don't think it's spreading in schools, we don't think it's spreading in schools, well, there's at least one family from Clinton with one kid, whose kid got it because he came to school that day. And, and that's, you know, that's the thing that we just, and I know, okay, you could say it's just one, but that, it's not like we're sitting here saying it hasn't happened, right? And it's not like we can sit there and go, well, there was no cases at the elementary school. No, there was a case in every school. So, um, you know, I think, I feel more defeated than anyone right now, because I think that we did everything we could do to try to get kids in school. And I just feel like, right now, we don't have the direction to do that from the state.
Joel, I just want to let Dr. Myers know that regardless of our votes or whatever's going on, you have been doing a wonderful job, keeping everything in control, keeping everything up to date, keeping, um, us informed, and I just want you to know, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
Fully noted.
Concur, yep. All right, moving on.
Uh, we've got the FY '20 end of year report will be submitted, uh, this week. Uh, we were waiting on some final numbers from the town, we got those just at the end of last week, and we've been inputting the, uh, inputting them into the form. Uh, they normally are due October 1st. Uh, we asked for the extension, you can apply for an extension to that, and, uh, most districts do that, particularly this year. Uh, so that, that is on pace to be completed and handed in. Uh, special town meeting, uh, Mike Ward sent out an email to me today, that the, the selectmen are considering the possibility of having a special town meeting. They're asking for departments if they have any interest in submitting an article, or if they need any business done that couldn't wait till the end of the year at the annual town meeting. Um, one of the, one of the things that, um, you know, I think we mentioned it here, is looking at, considering that the, the, the town received significantly, uh, more funding in Chapter 70 for education this year than the budget was built on. Because when we built the budget, there was no, there was no indication of what those numbers were going to be, some, some forecasts were calling for 10% cuts. Uh, fortunately, our, our Finance Committee built it on level funding, uh, which was better than a lot of communities. And it ended up, uh, we ended up getting significantly more than that. So, one of the thoughts is potentially to have, uh, the, the selectmen, if they revise the budget, to reallocate some of that additional funding to the schools, but for us not to reallocate, not to increase our budget for this year. What it would be is we would appropriate less of our, um, Circuit Breaker and our, uh, School Choice money, so that we could carry that money over into FY '20, it's going to be FY '22, um, because what they're forecasting right now is that FY '22 is actually going to be the bad budget year. Because while everyone was worried about FY '21, there have been a lot of CARES Act, COVID Relief Fund grants, those types of things, that have helped offset some of these costs. And the concern is that next year, we'll still probably be facing a lot of these challenges, but a lot of that money, that additional money might not be there. So what it would do, and I know if you remember this, when we passed our budget, you know, we didn't lay anybody off, we didn't make cuts from last year to this year, um, and we were able to do that by dipping into things like Circuit Breaker and School Choice. And we said that that's really not a sustainable model. We were kind of comfortable with it because of the Student Opportunity Act money, which should be coming. Um, but they've also indicated they're probably going to delay the Student Opportunity Act. So it would be just a way of us kind of not increasing our overall budget, um, just reallocating some of the money that the town was allocated, and, uh, and then going from there. And I think, but it not, and doesn't say it to be all, it would basically just revise And I think, but it not, and doesn't say it to be all, it'd be basically just revising the budget based on the real numbers. Because there might be other things where the town might have come up short in terms of, you know, if the town, let's say, was banking on collecting $300,000 in Medicaid revenue, and we didn't bring in $300,000 in Medicaid revenue last year because when the shutdown first happened, we weren't able to provide Medicaid eligible services, then some of that money could also be used to like offset maybe some of those discrepancies in the, in the other revenue in the budget. So it's more of an accounting thing, just to kind of, not a way for us to give more money, it's just a way for us to kind of pass through money so that hopefully in FY '22, we could use that money to avoid any potential cuts or, or things of that nature. So, if it's, you know, and I think that's, that's kind of one of the things that they're considering, is the board, are you guys comfortable if we, if I express interest to the top manager that we would be, you know, certainly willing to, you know, entertain that and work with them to, to do whatever's beneficial for, for the town as a whole?
Thoughts?
Sure.
No, I don't think anybody's opposed to it.
All right. So I'll reply to that email and indicate that, you know, we've discussed it, we understand that, you know, that we know. But Mike and I have talked about it a few times, so I think we're, we understand what the, how that would work. Just did want to inform you that we received two grants. We received a $30,000 grant for the Teacher Diversification Pilot Program. About $15,000 of this is to work with a company called TNTP. They're the ones that led some of our anti-bias training last year. They're also the ones that host the state's diversity network, which we're members of. And another part of that was to try to be part of a pilot program to look at potentially providing signing bonuses for qualified candidates to help meet diversity goals. But that's one, that's something we would work with them on to try to craft, we'd have to work on crafting policies of what that would look like. But that's one of the, the promising practices that they want, that, that you're able to pursue with that money. The second grant we received was a secondary school virtual coursework grant. And I think in your packet, I think you have the letters from the, from Governor Baker, just kind of informing us of these awards. And so the, the coursework grant is basically to help us providing virtual coursework, which is something that's come up a lot, is we've tried to fill some of the gaps with all that digital learning. So this will probably help us offset some of those costs, particularly things like VHS and courses that we've had to pay for to, for, to support some of our AP students and those types of things. Or to the flip side, some of the assessment software we've had to purchase that we didn't originally anticipate to try to support some of our, our gaps in learning. So we have not submitted a final RFP for that yet because it just came out with that today. We'll have to go through and see exactly what the allowable funding is to kind of, to kind of submit our application. For the MSBA, we did have a meeting on October 22nd. It was a phone conference with the MSBA, Chairman Bates, myself, the Director of Facilities, our School Business Manager, and the Town Manager, and the Middle School Principal all took part in that conference. It was good, but I would say it was definitely something where they're reaching out, I think, to all communities to try to see what the appetite, is there still an appetite for a project in your community, given anything that might have happened in your community as a result of COVID and all this kind of stuff? And, and, you know, specific questions about, were you able to reopen the buildings at all, and, and what modifications did you have to make, or do you continue, that you might have to make? So I thought the meeting went well, I don't know.
No, I did as well. I, I thought, you know, if the question was, is there, you know, a unified commitment to working with MSBA, they heard that loud and clear from everyone around the table. And I, I thought that the table was well represented. They, you know, we had the, you know, the Town Manager and the Superintendent Schools and the Director of Facilities and the Business Manager, you know, our board was represented. And the Select Board by virtue of the Town Manager being there was represented, and to, and to a degree, the Finance Committee. So I don't think you could have found a more, you know, collaborated, calibrated message in terms of us wanting to work with MSBA. So, you know, I take it as good news. We'll see, you know, how things continue to play out because it, it seems like there's, there's quite a few schools that are still interested in working with MSBA, and they only award so many projects.
The next one was just, you know, one of the things we always try to talk a little about, social, emotional, and physical wellness. Or, sorry, we talked about the goals of our strategic plan, and this one was social, emotional, and physical wellness. Increasing social and emotional support district-wide for all students. And I know, and actually, it was something that sort of popped up was, you know, making sure that we're building that into, you know, remote learning. And, and if we do have to do that even for a short period of time, making sure we're spending time checking in on kids. And I think that's, we tried to make that a focus of, especially when kids were in person when they first came back, trying to build that. We do have a team, the Elementary School, that is working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on building a social, emotional learning, multiple, multi-tiered system of support. So there's a group that participates in that professional development, and they are, they work after school, and they do some different things to try to refine and implement that, that system. That's part of the, part of the ongoing project we have at the statewide system of support. And, you know, I think one of the other things in here is the Safety Committee, and the Safety Committee, I think we've been meeting, we've definitely been meeting regularly and trying to, trying to look at the data and make, make as much sense of it as we can. So, staffing updates, Human Resource Manager, we finally, we do have one. She, her appointment, Alexis Texera, her appointment was accepted by the selectmen at their last meeting. I believe her start date is scheduled for November 9th-ish, but that was, I think that was the target. So, you know, just trying to work out all the, the pre-employment stuff and go through that. But that should be, so she should be coming on board. Be exciting to, to, to work with Alexis. She did a nice job through the interview process, and I think she'll be someone that is able to, you know, help us kind of pull that department together and, and kind of streamline some of our practices. The Director of Technology, we are down to finalists in that position. We did our screening committee, we had the, we selected three finalists, those three finalists came in the district last week. I'm trying to think, things blend together, it's Monday, so it would have been last week. So we should be able to wrap up that process pretty soon. I just really haven't been able to focus on making the last little adjustments, but hopefully we will have Director of Technology in place soon. Soon meaning like, in the next day or two, we offer the job. And then the, the last position on there, Family Outreach Coordinator, or we kind of, we posted it really more as a family liaison, mostly funding it through our Title III grant. And we have offered that position to someone. We're still kind of trying to finalize contract terms to see if we can make it all work. But it is a person who is trilingual, able to speak English, Spanish, and Portuguese, who would really help us be more of a family liaison to help support our, our students and families. And I think, I think that ends on my report.
Thank you. Curriculum Committee did not meet. I don't know if the Safety Committee wants to give any more detail or overview of the meeting from the 29th.
When do we meet? We meet next? Did we say that? We changed it to a Friday because we wanted to have the data. I don't remember which Friday it is now.
I forget now. We, we have a meeting scheduled on a Friday.
This Friday?
I don't know. The 20th. I think it's the 20th, right? Friday, the 20th, because we figured we would have the, the data from the, the 19th at that point. So we moved it to, we, we were meeting on Thursdays because they were publishing the data on Wednesday, and then that didn't work when they changed it to Thursday, so we're meeting on a Friday. I suppose if we, we could, we could convene that meet, that group fairly quickly if we got updated guidance to try to come up with a game plan. And that might allow us to, like I said, if it's a metric we, we feel comfortable with as a Safety Committee, we could maybe even try to determine if we either need to call a, a school committee meeting sooner, or if we need to just take action, so.
Okay. But Marketing spoke at our last meeting, is there anything new?
No, we, we need to set up a meeting, I just haven't set a date yet.
Okay. Nothing from Policies and Procedures? Do we have an update on the fire station grant?
You know, I saw Phil Duffy and I asked him about it. He said he thought it still might be available. I think it was something that was a, a little bit lengthier application that had to involve, I think, a few partners. So it was, it would take a little bit of coordination, but the, he was going to look back into it and, and double-check on it and get back to me, so I'll have to follow-up with him. I just, I kind of saw him in passing and I asked him about it, so it wasn't, it wasn't like a formal request.
Thank you. Any, anything else under Subcommittee Advisory Committees?
No.
Anything under Old Business? We have under New Business a, a letter from the Select Board and the, Dr. Myers, the Select Board and the, and the Board of Health that you have in your packets. It would be a guest column that we would like to submit to the item. And just, just an appeal to our community to continue to do the kinds of things that we've asked our community to do for these eight months. And, you know, just to reiterate that we are all in this together and, and that we're only as strong as the, as the tenacity with which we meet these moments, so. I guess I'd, I don't, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but.
They're just looking for our endorsement, right?
They are, yep. Yeah, it would, it would come jointly from all three boards.
And we're charged with endorsing by the Board of Health and Board of the members in the slot, because we can't wait until we get it, so.
Sure. And it was written, it was written by our former school committee member.
One of the authors, yeah.
We just give credit to Ed, that's all.
I'll make a motion to accept and acknowledge, endorse the letter as part of the process to the end.
Would anyone like to second it?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, any further discussion? There being none? All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Anything else under New Business? Thank you very much. Thank you very much to those who hung in there with us. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Second.
Motion being made and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.